Good morning, everyone. Welcome to City Hall, welcome to Council Chambers and to a meeting of the Los Angeles City Council for today, Tuesday, November 5, 2002. The City Council meets every Tuesday, Wednesday, and Friday at 10:00 a.m. Meetings are open to the public. We do invite you to join us. For those unable to attend council meetings, we can be viewed live from home on your cable station, Channel 35. We can also be viewed live via webcast from the city's homepage or heard via council phone. Mr. Clerk, I believe we have a quorum. Would you please call the roll?
Bryson, Galanter, Garcetti, Gruehl, Hahn, Holden, Labange, Ms. Caskey, Pacheco, Perry, Reyes, Ridley, Thomas, Weiss, Zine, Padilla, Tim Rivers, President, and a quorum, Mr. President.
Before beginning with today's agenda, this being Tuesday, as is customary, or we would normally have both a salute to the flag and a moment of inspiration, but this being Election Day, I've asked the City Clerk of the City of Los Angeles to please come forward and lead us in a salute to the flag and add a few words on the importance of turning out to vote today.
Can everyone please stand? And face the flag and place your right hand over your heart. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation in the invisible, with liberty and justice for all. Again, I think the Secretary of State is predicting a relatively low turnout today at the county and state elections. I would encourage all your constituents and you to please go to your precinct and vote if you already haven't cast a ballot either through the early voting or the absentee process. Unfortunately, we continue to have decreasing turnout in all our elections, including the city's elections. People die around the other world trying to cast a vote, and it's unfortunate, but there's some really critical issues on the ballot today, so hopefully the people who are viewing this, if you haven't voted, look at the back of your sample ballot and that will tell you where your precinct is, please, and then go there. If you can't find your precinct, the county and the city of Los Angeles can assist you in locating your precinct through a computer program, so give us a call if you're having difficulty finding that precinct location, and please exercise your constitutional right to vote.
Thank you, Mr. Kerry. For people watching at home, if you're watching this meeting live, you have until 8:00 p.m. to get to the polls. If you're watching the evening rerun, you have just a few minutes left to get to the polls, but please get out and vote. Mr. Clerk, first order of business, please.
Approval of the minutes. Mr. Bryson moves. Mr. Reyes seconds. Commendatory resolutions for approval. Ms. Gruehl moves, and Mr. Labange seconds.
Mr. President, before starting the agenda, there is a request from Councilmember Gruehl to continue item number one until November 20th.
Okay, members, request to continue item number one. Is there any objection? Seeing none, so ordered. Ms. Hahn, did you wish to be recognized?
I'd like to call number two special.
Okay, we're almost there. Mr. Clerk?
Item number two, notice for public hearing.
Ms. Hahn calls number two special.
Thank you, Mr. President, colleagues.
Ms. Hahn, let's go through the agenda, call item special, then we'll come back to number two, I'm sorry. Mr. Clerk?
Items numbers three through 11 on the regular agenda, items noticed, excuse me, items for which public hearings have been held. Item number 11, a motion is required, and as much as there's two reports on one file and the recommendations differ.
Okay, is there a motion from the floor on item number 11, Mr. Labange?
I move.
Which report?
The recommendation of the audits.
Okay, we have a motion of the audits committee report for item number 11. On items number three through 11, having had public hearing in committee, a motion from the floor would be required to reopen the public hearing. Members wishing to call any specials? Any specials on items three through 11? Seeing none? Members, we do have a motion on item number 11. Mr. Clerk, please open the roll. Please close the roll and tabulate the vote.
Twelve ayes.
Okay, is it a motion for reconsideration by Ms. Hahn on item number seven? Let's open the roll, close the roll, and tabulate the vote.
Twelve ayes.
Item seven reconsidered and called special by Ms. Hahn.
Thank you.
Mr. Clerk, next item, please.
One moment, please. Mr. President, items numbers 12 through 26 are items which public hearings have not been held.
Items 12 through 26 now before us, members without objection will consider these matters today. I do not have requests from members of the public to address the council on these items, so we shall deem the public hearing satisfied. Members wishing to call any specials? Items 12 through 26? Seeing none? Mr. Clerk, please open the roll. Please close the roll and tabulate the vote.
Twelve ayes.
Those are approved. Next item, please.
Bring you back to item number two, called special by Councilmember Hahn.
Ms. Hahn, item number two.
Mr. President, colleagues, we continue this item, and I called it special because I would like to move that we waive the administrative fees associated with this assessment. I hope you'll support me in this.
Okay, thank you, Ms. Hahn. Other members wishing to be heard on item number two? Seeing none? Mr. Clerk, please open the roll. Please close the roll and tabulate the vote.
Twelve ayes.
Okay, is it a motion for reconsideration by Ms. Hahn on item number seven? Let's open the roll, close the roll, and tabulate the vote.
Twelve ayes.
Item seven reconsidered and called special by Ms. Hahn.
Thank you.
Mr. Clerk, next item, please.
One moment, please. Mr. President, items numbers 12 through 26 are items which public hearings have not been held.
Items 12 through 26 now before us, members without objection will consider these matters today. I do not have requests from members of the public to address the council on these items, so we shall deem the public hearing satisfied. Members wishing to call any specials? Items 12 through 26? Seeing none? Mr. Clerk, please open the roll. Please close the roll and tabulate the vote.
Twelve ayes.
That is approved. Next item, please.
Mr. President, I point a clarification on item number two. Was that an amended motion to waive the fees?
I, Ms. Hahn? Yeah, I believe that was received without objection. Ms. Hahn, just a point of clarification for the clerk. Your amending motion included the waiver of the fees?
Yes.
Okay, again, without objection.
Next item, please. Item number seven, called special by Councilmember Hahn.
Ms. Hahn?
Thank you, Mr. President, colleagues.
Ms. Hahn, let's go through the agenda, call item special, then we'll come back to number two, I'm sorry. Mr. Clerk?
Items numbers three through 11 on the regular agenda, items noticed, excuse me, items for which public hearings have been held. Item number 11, a motion is required, and as much as there's two reports on one file and the recommendations differ.
Okay, is there a motion from the floor on item number 11, Mr. Labange?
I move.
Which, which report?
The recommendation of the audits.
Okay, we have a motion of the audits committee report for item number 11. On items number three through 11, having had public hearing in committee, a motion from the floor would be required to reopen the public hearing. Members wishing to call any specials? Any specials on items three through 11? Seeing none? Members, we do have a motion on item number 11. Mr. Clerk? Mr. Clerk, please open the roll. Please close the roll and tabulate the vote.
Twelve ayes.
Okay, is it a motion for reconsideration by Ms. Hahn on item number seven? Let's open the roll, close the roll, and tabulate the vote.
Twelve ayes.
Item seven reconsidered and called special by Ms. Hahn.
Thank you.
Mr. Clerk, next item, please.
One moment, please. Mr. President, items numbers 12 through 26 are items which public hearings have not been held.
Items 12 through 26 now before us, members without objection will consider these matters today. I do not have requests from members of the public to address the council on these items, so we shall deem the public hearing satisfied. Members wishing to call any specials? Items 12 through 26? Seeing none? Mr. Clerk, please open the roll. Please close the roll and tabulate the vote.
Twelve ayes.
That is approved. Next item, please.
Mr. President, I point a clarification on item number two. Was that an amended motion to waive the fees?
I, Ms. Hahn? Yeah, I believe that was received without objection. Ms. Hahn, just a point of clarification for the clerk. Your amending motion included the waiver of the fees?
Yes.
Okay, again, without objection.
Next item, please. Item number seven, called special by Councilmember Hahn.
Ms. Hahn?
Thank you, Mr. President, colleagues. This was an item that came before my committee, education in neighborhoods, because we had found out that L.A. Unified School District had asked DWP to turn off their auxiliary lights around their school campuses, and many of us felt like, no matter what kind of budget cuts the school district was involved in, we felt this was really egregious, and that many communities that are surround, are lived next to a school campus really felt like having those lights cut down on crime, cut down on crime and vandalism within the school, and really was kind of a partnership thing that the school district was providing along with DWP to the communities. So we were all very upset when they just arbitrarily decided to tell DWP to cut the lights. So we urged them to turn the lights back on. They've done that, so I just wanted to bring it to our attention that, in fact, in partnership with DWP, the school district has decided to keep the lights on, on the auxiliary, on the outside of the campuses, and we think that's important, so just wanted to thank the school district and thank DWP. This is a great partnership program, this outside lighting program, and it really means something to neighborhoods to have their schools lit up after the school has been closed for the day. I think we're just receiving and filing this, but I just wanted to bring it to our attention that they did the right thing.
Okay, thank you, Ms. Hahn, Mr. Labange.
Thank you, Mr. President. Ms. Yancey from the Department of Water and Power, if you could just give a little brief analysis, thank you, Ms. Hahn, for what you said there, and you covered it all, but I want the Department of Water and Power to just touch the bases.
Wendy Yancey, Water and Power. Just to recap, as Councilmember Hahn stated, we were contacted by L.A. Unified School District June of this year and asked to remove 160, the lighting at 160 facilities, and we did not remove them, actually, we just removed the cell that would turn them on at dusk with the anticipation that they would ask that we continue the program. On the request of this council, we have worked with L.A. USD and have turned on all the lights at all the facilities, and they, it is a great program. It provides extra light to any area that is, that is shines upon, and we've actually been asked by L.A. USD to add additional lighting at some of their facilities. It's a great program. It not only helps L.A. unify the school district, but it also helps the community, the surrounding community.
Good, and, Mr. President, members of the council, several members of the Board of Education with strongly supportive of this effort and the school district, so thank you. Thank the leadership for all the members of the council who are involved, and thank the Department of Water for continuing to keep the lights on.
Thank you, Mr. Labange, Mr. Zine.
Thank you, Mr. President, colleagues. I remember when this issue came up, and it was of great concern due to the fact there's security lighting that was mentioned, and do we have a plan in place in the event the school district encounters some other financial problems that we don't encounter a situation like this again? Is there some type of liaison that's been established as a result of this situation?
We are in contact with L.A. USD, like, back and forth, and we don't anticipate this to happen again. We will work together and come to whatever resolution we need to, to make sure that those lights stay on. Because as I said before, it's a huge benefit to the community in addition to the schools.
Well, as far as safety around the schools, and we know we've got gangs that oftentimes visit some of the campuses, and at night, when the teachers and the students are waiting with daylight savings time going away, it gets darker earlier, so obviously, there's a great concern for their personal safety. So I'm glad that this agreement was made between the Water and Power and the school district. I just want to make sure in the future, if something like this comes up, because it's really snuck up, it was very much a surprise to me and many others when we heard about them sending out this notice, we're going to shut down the security lighting, and it seems ironic that we put lights in for security and then we're going to turn them off when we've got problems with crime. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Zine. Other members wishing to be heard on this item? Seeing none? Mr. Clerk, please open the roll. Please close the roll and tabulate the vote.
Twelve ayes.
That is approved, or received and filed as is recommended. Mr. Ridley, Thomas, followed by Ms. Msikowski. If you're watching the evening rerun, you have just a few minutes left to get to the polls, but please get out and vote. Mr. Clerk, first order of business, please.
Approval of the minutes. Mr. Brinson moves. Mr. Reyes seconds. Commendatory resolutions for approval. Ms. Gruel moves, and Mr. Labange seconds.
Mr. President, before starting the agenda, there is a request from Councilmember Gruel to continue item number one until November 20th.
Okay, members, request to continue item number one. Is there any objection? Seeing none, so ordered. Ms. Hahn, did you wish to be recognized?
I would like to call number two special.
Okay, we're almost there. Mr. Clerk.
Item number two, notice for public hearing.
Ms. Hahn calls number two special.
Thank you, Mr. President, colleagues.
Ms. Hahn, let's go through the agenda, call item special, then we'll come back to number two, I'm sorry. Mr. Clerk.
Items numbers three through 11 on the regular agenda, items noticed, excuse me, items for which public hearings have been held. Item number 11, a motion is required, and as much as there's two reports on one file, and the recommendations differ.
Okay, is there a motion from the floor on item number 11? Mr. Labange.
I move.
Which report? We have two reports.
The recommendation of the audits.
Okay, we have a motion of the audits committee report for item number 11. On items number three through 11, having had public hearing in committee, a motion from the floor would be required to reopen the public hearing. Members wishing to call any specials? Any specials on items three through 11? Seeing none. Members, we do have a motion on item number 11. Mr. Clerk? Mr. Clerk, please open the roll. Please close the roll and tabulate the vote.
Twelve ayes.
Okay, is it a motion for reconsideration by Ms. Hahn on item number seven? Let's open the roll, close the roll, and tabulate the vote.
Twelve ayes.
Item seven reconsidered and called special by Ms. Hahn.
Thank you.
Mr. Clerk, next item, please.
One moment, please. Mr. President, items numbers 12 through 26 are items which public hearings have not been held.
Items 12 through 26 now before us, members without objection, will consider these matters today. I do not have requests from members of the public to address the council on these items, so we shall deem the public hearing satisfied. Members wishing to call any specials? Items 12 through 26? Seeing none. Mr. Clerk, please open the roll. Please close the roll and tabulate the vote.
Twelve ayes.
Those are approved. Next item, please.
Bring you back to item number two, called special by Councilmember Hahn.
Ms. Hahn, item number two.
It's time for me. Mr. President, colleagues, we continue this item, and I called it special because I would like to move that we waive the administrative fees associated with this assessment. I hope you'll support me in this.
Okay, thank you, Ms. Hahn. Other members wishing to be heard on item number two? Seeing none. Mr. Clerk, please open the roll. Please close the roll and tabulate the vote.
Twelve ayes.
That is approved. Next item, please.
Mr. President, a point of clarification on item number two, was that a amended motion to waive the fees?
I, Ms. Hahn? Yeah, I believe that was received without objection. Ms. Hahn, just a point of clarification for the clerk. Your amending motion included the waiver of the fees?
Yes.
Okay, again, without objection. Next item, please.
Item number seven, called special by Councilmember Hahn.
Ms. Hahn.
Thank you, Mr. President, colleagues. This was an item that came before my committee, Education in Neighborhoods, because we had found out that LA Unified School District had asked DWP to turn off their auxiliary lights around their school campuses. And many of us felt like, no matter what kind of budget cuts the school district was involved in, we felt this was really egregious, and that many communities that are surround, are lived next to a school campus really felt like having those lights cut down on crime, cut down on crime and vandalism within the school, and really was kind of a partnership thing that the school district was providing along with DWP to the communities. So we were all very upset when they just arbitrarily decided to tell DWP to cut the lights. So we urged them to turn the lights back on. They've done that, so I just wanted to bring it to our attention that, in fact, in partnership with DWP, the school district has decided to keep the lights on on the auxiliary, on the outside of the campuses, and we think that's important. So just wanted to thank the school district and thank DWP. This is a great partnership program, this outside lighting program, and it really means something to neighborhoods to have their schools lit up after the school has been closed for the day. I think we're just receiving and filing this, but I just wanted to bring it to our attention that they did the right thing.
Okay, thank you, Ms. Hahn. Mr. Labange.
Thank you, Mr. President. Ms. Yancey from the Department of Water and Power, if you could just give a little brief analysis. Thank you, Ms. Hahn, for what you said there, and you covered it all, but I want the Department of Water and Power to just touch the bases.
Wendy Yancey, Water and Power. Just to recap, as Councilmember Hahn stated, we were contacted by LA Unified School District June of this year and asked to remove 160, the lighting at 160 facilities. And we did not remove them, actually, we just removed the cell that would turn them on at dusk, with the anticipation that they would ask that we continue the program. On the request of this council, we have worked with LAUSD and have turned on all the lights at all the facilities, and they, it is a great program. It provides extra light to any area that is, that shines upon, and we've actually been asked by LAUSD to add additional lighting at some of their facilities. It's a great program. It not only helps LA unify the school district, but it also helps the community, the surrounding community.
Good, and, Mr. President, members of the council, several members of the Board of Education with strongly supportive of this effort and the school district, so thank you. Thank the leadership for all the members of the council who are involved, and thank the Department of Water for continuing to keep the lights on.
Thank you, Mr. Labange. Mr. Zine.
Thank you, Mr. President, colleagues. I remember when this issue came up, and it was of great concern due to the fact there's security lighting that was mentioned, and do we have a plan in place in the event the school district encounters some other financial problems that we don't encounter a situation like this again? Is there some type of liaison that's been established as a result of this situation?
We are in contact with LAUSD, like, back and forth, and we don't anticipate this to happen again. We will work together and come to whatever resolution we need to, to make sure that those lights stay on. Because as I said before, it's a huge benefit to the community in addition to the schools.
Well, as far as safety around the schools, and we know we've got gangs that oftentimes visit some of the campuses, and at night, when the teachers and the students are waiting with daylight savings time going away, it gets darker earlier, so obviously, there's a great concern for their personal safety. So I'm glad that this agreement was made between the Water and Power and the school district. I just want to make sure in the future, if something like this comes up, because it's really snuck up, it was very much a surprise to me and many others when we heard about them sending out this notice, "We're going to shut down the security lighting." And it seems ironic that we put lights in for security, and then we're going to turn them off when we've got problems with crime. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Zine. Other members wishing to be heard on this item? Seeing none. Mr. Clerk, please open the roll. Please close the roll and tabulate the vote.
Twelve ayes.
That is approved, or received and filed as is recommended. Mr. Rudy Thomas, followed by Ms. Misakowski.
Thank you, Mr. President. May I request a reconsideration of both 12 and 21? 21, there's a motion, a substitute in circulation, we've moved rather briskly, and our able city attorney calls to our attention that we need to correct that. And with respect to 21, with respect to 12, I'm sorry, there is a couple of amendments that need to be in place, and the balance goes back to committee, so if you can reconsider those, I think we'll be in good shape.
Okay, we have a motion for reconsideration. Let's do one motion for both items. Mr. Clerk, please open the roll. Please close the roll and tabulate the vote.
Twelve ayes.
Okay, that is approved. Item 12, before us, a substitute motion has been circulated. Are we in receipt of that substitute, Mr. Clerk?
On item 12?
I have not received it yet.
On item 12, shall we take that first?
Let's take it verbally.
All right. Item 12 is to recommend that number 1C in the committee report be referred back to ITGS for further review, and this will allow us to continue to work with the industry to take care of their concerns with respect to that particular matter. And with respect to item 21I, there's a substitute that goes for the Appreciation Day Ceremony that's happening for customer-friendly activity, and it's in circulation. Those are the two items, Mr. President.
Okay, Ms. Misakowski.
Mr. President, I was going to ask forthwith on 17, but I also wanted to call 12 special, and I wondered if we could have a discussion on it. I have no problem with an amendment, but I would like to have some discussion perhaps with staff and just some clarity on what the changes are as it affects the above-ground facilities, and in particular, those things that might have been called a utility pole now might be an antenna, might not be an antenna, might, I just, so if we could have a discussion on it.
Let's suspend then with item number 21 first.
Right.
We have Mr. Rudy Thomas's motion. Other members wishing to be heard on item 21?
Mr. President, I haven't received the document for item number 21 yet.
Okay.
Does CLA have 21?
Let's hold that on the desk as we await them to distribute the motion. Let's proceed then to item 17. Mr. Clerk, I requested that matter go forthwith. And now to item number 12, Ms. Misakowski.
I don't know if the staff is here. Perhaps the chair can clarify the issues, and particularly as they deal with some of the changes and how a pole, a utility pole, is affected as something of a telecommunication nature, other than the normal wires might be put on it. What is required, if anything? Is there a difference between that pole in the public sector versus the public street right-of-way versus private property?
That's precisely the piece that we have excised, referred that back to committee for further review. The balance of the report goes forward, Ms. Misakowski. That was the nature of the amendment, at which time you'll have opportunity to help us shape it, because I think that which is being proposed as an alternative is yet to be fully fleshed out.
And needed more clarification. All right, fine, so if that item is going back, I have no problem.
There you are.
Okay. Any further discussion on item number 12? Seeing none. Let's open the roll, Mr. Rudy Thomas's motion. Please close the roll and tabulate the vote.
Twelve ayes.
Okay, we await further scrub down in committee, Mr. Rudy Thomas.
Thank you, sir.
Has a substitute motion for item 21 been distributed yet?
It has not been distributed.
I've requested it more than once, and somehow...
Mr. Clerk, let's take public comment next.
The clerk has it now, Mr., President, Mr. Conrad was hiding it from himself.
Has it been distributed to members? I don't believe it has. Let's take public comment next and return to item 21 once members have had an opportunity to review. Members of the public, this is an opportunity for you to address the council on matters appearing within our jurisdiction, but not on today's agenda. The council calls forward Melrose Larry Green, followed by Wiley Brown.
Good morning, everybody. I hope you've all voted by now, voted to keep the city as whole as one. There is probably no more open, no more democratic, and no more participatory body than the LA City Council, and I only wish that every aspect of the government, state, federal, and county, were as accessible and as open as the LA City Government is. I'll be honest with you, I didn't sleep much last night. It was a terrible night for me yesterday. We all heard the awful news about Irv Rubin, and I spoke about a week ago during public comment about Irv Rubin and how unfairly he'd been treated, and I was at the courthouse yesterday, I'll be very brief. I was at the courthouse yesterday, and this does affect the city of LA, because you are my representatives, and this is business affecting the city of LA. I would like to know why Irv Rubin wasn't granted bail, why Irv Rubin wasn't allowed to have Jewish dietary food brought into him for 11 months, why the visitor list was not allowed to include anybody but the immediate family. Irv Rubin wasn't a terrorist, he was a veteran of the Air Force, he had a 90-year-old father that he cared for, a wife and two kids, both of whom I know, and I think it's important that we investigate, the city, the city attorney, and the city council call for an investigation, who's behind this terrible treatment. This can't go on in America, it doesn't matter if they're Jewish or not. It could be an African-American, it could be a Hispanic, and I don't want Irv Rubin whether, and it looks like he's going to die, he's very, 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 very ill at this point. He should not have died in vain, and there should be people fired in that federal prison, that MDC. And don't they care about people's medical care? Don't they care about why he lost 50 or 60 pounds? Are we living in America, or are we living in Iraq? Now, this is Election Day, and I hope you all go out and vote, and I don't want Irv Rubin to have died in vain. Thank you.
Mr. Brown? Please come forward.
Thank you, Mr. President of the City Council and council members, for granting me the privilege to be here to speak on my behalf. And first, I would like to commend the City Council for the production of a resolution to the problem relating to the Bunker Hill tragedy. I understand that was a couple of, two of the parties sustained serious injuries at that due to the trial accident, and the lady's husband, who was injured, was fatal. I also would like to thank the council for production of a resolution on behalf of the suspects who were abused by the police at the Rampart Police Station. Concerning the police, they are associated with this accident that I'm involved, that I was involved in as a LA City employee. They raided my home unjustly under false pretenses. They alleged that a bank robber had robbed a bank near the vicinity of my home, and at the time they raided my house, a LA City employee was there. Actually, two LA City employees were there. One had just entered my house, and they alleged that a bank robber had ran into my house.
Sir, if I may ask you to conclude soon, please?
Pardon?
If I may ask you to conclude soon?
Yes, I'll certainly speed it up. And also, I understand that the members of the City Council has read an affidavit that I served on all members of the City Council. Now, if any member of the City Council or anyone in City Hall can discredit the statements that I, that are in the affidavit relating to nine fractures in my back, which was concealed by the city doctors, a crushed rib cage, major dislocation of my pelvis, and I didn't have no major, didn't have a tumor on the main artery of my heart three weeks before the accident.
Okay, sir.
So if that can be, just a minute, please, sir, this is a serious matter.
No, I understand it, we've had other public speakers, I may have to ask you to conclude, and...
If any member can disprove that, I will not pursue this, pursue this matter in the court.
Okay, sir, but by law, we cannot directly respond to matters brought to our attention during the course of public comment. We do have to ask you to conclude now. We have your name and your address on file.
Mr. President, Mr. President.
Mr. Holden.
I'll have one of my staff speak to this gentleman. This statement he made is concerned to me that if this is happening in the city of Los Angeles by LAPD officers, we need to know about it. Thank you, sir, for bringing it to our attention. That's Mr. Hernandez. He'll listen to you, and we'll hear what you have to say. Thank you for coming down here.
This concludes public comment for today's meeting. Mr. Clerk, next item, please.
Mr. President, just a question here. Mr. Holden, thank you for having your deputy go over there, but I think we should have one, public comment come when someone has some need and some help, that either the district representative or the CLA assists the person so they're not, so their point is heard. So if we could do that in the future, I think it would be very helpful. Thank you.
Mr. Clerk.
Item number 21, substitute motion has been distributed, and there is a motion to adopt.
Mr. Rudy Thomas?
Thank you, thank you, Mr. President, members of the council. This is essentially a motion that comes to us as a substitute, that comes forward to clarify the matter regarding a community fair that's sponsored in the Eighth Council District, and it is explicit in that regard, and we simply ask that we move it forthwith.
Thank you. Other members wishing to be heard on this item? Seeing none, let's open the roll on substitute. Please close the roll and tabulate the vote.
Thirteen ayes.
That is approved. Next item, please.
Motion to repose on a referral. Motion shall be posted and referred. Councilmember's request for excuse from council attendance. Councilmember Hahn requests a excuse November 6th for city business. This meets policy.
Ms. Hahn is excused. The desk is clear. Mr. Pacheco.
Mr. President, colleagues, I apologize, but I'm trying to get a Rule 23 special event motion for tonight drafted and put before you, so...
Want to make a verbal motion?
Yeah, I would love to make a verbal motion. Simply joining with Holbeck Youth Center and having a community event tonight between 5:00 and midnight on First Street between Cummings and Chicago, and simply would ask to direct the Department of Transportation to close the street and provide all appropriate staffing for that service, and we would absorb the cost.
Mr. Pacheco, maybe that direction can be, or requests be given to the department. They'll normally do that. You can bring it in as a rule 16 tomorrow, we can act on it next Tuesday.
All I was told by the department this morning was that they would not move unless the council adopted it. That's why I'm bringing it in as a rule 23.
Then the council would need to make the findings that the need to act arose after the posting of the agenda, and there's an immediate need to act, so...
Okay, well, let me make, let me, let me, let me move to vote on the findings and...
Okay, other members wishing to be heard on the findings? Seeing none. Mr. Clerk, please open the roll. Please close the roll and tabulate the vote.
Thirteen ayes.
Now on Mr. Pacheco's motion itself. Members wishing to be heard? Seeing none. Mr. Clerk? Mr. Holden, may I ask you to press your button, please?
I just asked him to explain, he can press.
Well, I'm asking you to press your button.
We're, tonight, the Holbeck Youth Center and our office are having a community event after the elections, after 8:00, close elections, community event. Thank you, Mr. Holden.
Other questions, Mr. Holden? Any other members? Mr. Clerk, please open the roll. Please close the roll and tabulate the vote.
Thirteen ayes.
That is approved. Forthwith, please. And we will request from Councilmember Pacheco a written copy of his motion for the file. I believe the desk is clear. Members, are there any announcements today? Any announcements? Mr. Reyes.
Thank you, Council President, colleagues. This past weekend, I had the opportunity to watch this play at the LA Theater Center called "Dementia," and it's a world-class play. And what happened at the end of the play is we literally had some of the key producers and sponsors come up onstage and talk about how because of politics, because of politics, we were shutting down the LA Theater Center, and we were shutting down this facility. It's a tremendous facility in downtown. It is a venue by which, if you look at any other city, is publicly supported, and yet in Los Angeles, we have a facility like this, and it's supposed to be on a dying vine, if you will. I hope we can come together as a council, together with the mayor, and make sure we support the arts in such a way where this kind of world-class production can continue to provide an incredible service to our community. The subject matter of this play happened to be one in which deals with how individuals, as they are dying of AIDS, are dealing with a lot of their experiences with family and friends, and it has a lot to do with the multicultural barriers we have in vast communities that are suffering this, yet we are not responding the way we should be. So these are messages I think we need to give to our communities, and hopefully in the future, we come together and strategize with the mayor's office and Culture Affairs Department to see how we can maintain this facility.
Thank you, Mr. Reyes. Other announcements today? Members, any other announcements?
Encourage everybody to go out and vote and participate in the greatest right that we have as American citizens.
Thank you, Mr. Labange. Mr. Rudy Thomas? Okay, then as a final announcement, let's wish our colleague, Mr. Rudy Thomas, the best today in his election, his bid to become the next state representative from the city of Los Angeles.
I want you to know I voted for you this morning.
Thank you very much. Thank you.
Yeah, so did I.
Adjourning motions. Please write for adjourning motions.
We have announcements here?
Did you have an announcement, Mr. Holden?
Yes. Mark, I hope you win.
Adjourning motions. Chair recognizes Mr. Brinson.
Yes, it's with great regrets and sadness that I ask that we adjourn in memory of Jack Atlas, my senior advisor in my office for 24 years. Not only that, but a friend, close friend for many years. He served our community and the city and the senior population very well. He's going to be really missed. He's survived by his, by his wife Ruth and two sons, and I would ask that we adjourn his memory.
Thank you. Mr. Rudy Thomas?
Mr. President, members of the council, it's sad to me to offer this adjourning motion, and I trust that you'll join in with me to announce the passing of DeWitt Bass, father of Karen Bass, who many of us know as the executive director of the Community Coalition. He passed this past Sunday at the age of 82. He was a retired postal worker and the resident, and a resident of our city for some 60 years, and he was a strong supporter of Karen and all of her endeavors to make her mark on our community, and it is without question that she has done that, and the loss of her father is a most significant event in the life of the family.
I'd like to sign here.
Ms. Perry.
I wanted to sign onto that one as well.
Other tributes? Members? Mr. Clerk, please call the roll.
Thank you, Mr. President, and I have a song that I want to dedicate to Mr. Holden, and it is in memoriam as it relates to the electorate and how they should behave today. Sir?
This meeting is adjourned.